Thanks, Joanne.
I can see if Tim picks up. I mean, it's really last minute. I don't know if the...
All right, it's six o'clock. We'll open the meeting. Just do that, because otherwise Eric gets feisty. Okay, so first up, we have examination of meeting minutes from April 26. I would make a motion to approve them as written. Eric, you need some time with them?
May third?
No, April 26.
Do you want me to stay back there, Josh?
We have...
Skater. No, this is fine.
Any discussion? On favor? Aye. Right, here's the original to sign. Next up, make a motion to approve the meeting executive session, meeting minutes of April 26, 2021.
Sure.
As written. I'll give you a second. Those are executive. And then I need... My brother.
Good.
Um, okay. Any discussion? On favor? Aye. So this is one you sign and your copy, please. And your copy of the executive session, please. Yeah, just want to get it spread out. Oh, you don't have to sign over. Thank you, thank you. This one's got mine up here at home. I'm gonna get this printed. Uh, okay. Do we have any audience participation before we start in here? I'm hoping there was. We could hear back from Tim. No? All right. Um, all right, so first up on our agenda is our nuisance or dangerous dog hearing. Um, so Percy went to Massachusetts General Law, Section 157, Chapter 140. The Select Board has scheduled a public hearing to determine whether the dog owned or kept by John and Susan Verovik of 12 Birch Road in the town of Lanford is a nuisance dog or dangerous dog as defined in said statute. This notice is based on a written complaint brought forward to the town by Kim Blanchett of 4 Birch Hill Road. The hearing is scheduled for today, six. Okay, is there anything else I have to read to go into it, or is that...
Yeah.
Birch Hill. Yeah, I think I said 12 Birch Hill for her and four for you. Okay.
No, I think that's it.
That's it. Um, so we have Terry, our Animal Control Officer, with us, and she's gonna swear Kim in.
Well, no, Terry will just kind of give us a summary of what's going on, but when we do hear from the parties, that they get sworn in to...
Do we have someone here? Do we have a Susan or John here online?
Karen and Bob and...
Nope.
Okay.
Kevin, David, Bob. Nope.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Terry. Thank you.
Well, um, just basically repeated last year. Kim was walking her dog, and once again Sue's dog came down and basically chased Kim across the road. And as you can see from the letter, I did speak with Sue about it recently, and she had said that it over the bump, that it was her husband's fault or something, that he didn't believe the dog should be on leash, and she would call Kim. And that was the last I heard. So, um, that's about all I have. I mean, we can either deem the dog a dangerous dog and proceed from there. Or I don't really feel it is a dangerous dog, however, put a score to that. But if they're not willing to do the parameters that we set for them last year, well, keep him there and keep him on the leash, then I don't see that they love the same chicks.
So last year, just for the record, on September... No. On August 31st, 2020, we had a meeting, and we declared that Daisy, we declared Dixie as a nuisance dog, and said that the dog known as Dixie shall not be allowed outdoors on the improved portion of the owner's property located at 12 Birch Hill Road, Lanford, Mass., within 500 feet of any public way in the town of Lanford, or on any property owned by any other person, including public ways of the town, unless it is secured behind a fence, or held on a leash, or held by a responsible adult, a leash held by a responsible adult, sorry. Um, so...
That is what I recall as well.
Yeah. So that obviously hasn't been upheld. I think at that point, we had given them a few months to put a fence in. Do we know if a fence was put up?
I do not know, because I was not directed to investigate that.
Okay.
And then we also gave them permission to run the dog without a leash, but that was on the back half of the property.
In the woods, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Terry, do you want to swear Kim in so that we can...
Not Terry, the tumbler.
Oh, sorry, why do I keep... I'm so confused. Um...
You're fine, Karen.
It's been a long week. It's only Monday. Doris, do you want to swear Kim in for us, please, so we can hear her speak?
Here, do you remember what you said last time?
Oh, true.
Oh. Okay, so you're on hand. Do you swear to tell the whole truth, that's part of the truth, that'll be back?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, Kim.
Hello.
We can.
Hello. So, I'm back again. I'm just gonna read through my statement that I sent, because I think it'll be the easiest. And I think you'll clearly see that the statement that John was nowhere to be seen, it was actually Sue at the back of her vehicle with her dog. Um, and that she allowed her dog to run down the road and did not pursue it, even though she hollered at the dog once. I have two statements from witnesses that actually saw what happened that day, and I also have two witness statements that also say that they have seen Dixie off-leash in the yard with no humans around. Easter Sunday and somewhere in March. Um, I'm writing this because on April 7th, at 3:45 to 4:00 p.m. in the afternoon, the dog Dixie owned by John and Sue Verovik's located at 12 Birch Hill Road, Lanford, was off-leash and came after Trooper and I again. I was finishing my walk, heading home, when I approached the Verovik's driveway. There were a few cars at the intersection of Birch Hill and Cowell Mountain Road, because it was time for elementary school kids to be dropped off. As I started by the driveway, I looked up, as I always do, and I saw Dixie standing by Sue's side, while Sue was unloading her vehicle. I thought to myself, it's okay, she's on a leash. Nevertheless, I hurried by, so Trooper would not, or I heard Trooper by, so she would not see us. As I started to pick up pace, the kids waiting at the bus stop across the way um, with their mother Lila, hollered across to me how cute Trooper was. At that point, Dixie turned to see what the kids were yelling for. She saw Trooper and I immediately bolted down the driveway towards us. I started to run. She barked once about halfway down. I heard Sue yell Dixie once, but she did not pursue her dog. My thinking was Sue did not see us, or did not care. Dixie kept coming as I fled, in-flight mode, to keep her away from Trooper. He ran across to Cowell Mountain Road, not watching for traffic, as I was worried that she would catch us and pitch into him again. He stumbled on Cowell Mountain Road, almost into a red truck. He scrambled to the other side of the truck, and Deena Janeski asked if I was all right. She said she saw me running and realized I was not watching out for traffic, and then saw Dixie chasing us. She offered to keep her truck between Dixie, Trooper, and I. She also offered to have me get in, but I didn't want to hold her up, so when Dixie seemed to have lost interest after about five to eight minutes, we started to move forward. I managed to get where people were waiting for the bus, and I kept an eye on Dixie as she kept heading back up to Sue, who was still unloading her vehicle, with no concern as to why her dog had run down the driveway. The bus came and cars started to back up on Birch Hill Road at the end of Sue's driveway, so I decided to make a run for it. I hoped the vehicles would block Dixie's view. As I got to the first vehicle, I looked to see Sue looking down the driveway at me. She grabbed the dog by the collar and brought her in. I'm asking for another hearing to deem this dog dangerous, at this time, because I almost got hit fleeing from the dog um, that was ordered by the town of Lanford to never be off-leash or out of her enclosure. I'm also asking for another hearing, as two other people have stepped up and stated in the past month or two that they have seen Dixie running in the front yard off-leash with no owner present. It really frustrates me to know, and that for three and one-half years now, I've been dealing with the owners of this dog. They have no disregard for their fellow neighbors. To put it in their own words at the last hearing, "I will do this because I want Kim and Trooper to feel safe when out walking." She also begged me not to push euthanasia of Dixie, because she had been such a comfort to Sue and loved her so much. My only thought is, if you love your dog so much, why would you ever think of violating an order issued by the town, knowing there would be consequences? Enclosed are the statements from the people who had witnessed what had happened that day, and to others who had seen her off-leash prior to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I guess my questions are, what our possible choices are at this point? So we had already deemed Dixie as a nuisance, and we had given an order for the fencing. Um, I don't think that we gave sort of, uh, if you don't, this will happen last time.
No.
So I don't know what our options are in terms of that, like what... I don't want to have declare a dog, you know, have to be euthanized, but I want, I would like to know what our options are, you know, at this point going forward, to make sure that this is followed through.
We have seven remedies available to us.
Okay.
One, the dog be humanly restrained. Two, the dog be confined to the premises of its owner or keeper, either indoors or outdoors. That when removed from the premises of the owner or keeper, the dog shall be securely humanely muzzled and restrained. That the owner or keeper provide documented proof of no less than $100,000 of insurance for claims resulting from intentional or unintentional acts of the dog. That the owner or keeper provide licensing authority, ACO, a way of identifying the dog, which way we know who the dog is. And that the dog be altered, so that it's unable to reproduce. Uh, and that the dog be humanly euthanized under seven, so...
So it sounds like we have some options before that. Um, I think we've tried a couple of them already.
We also have the option of fines.
Okay. Oh, that's good to know. Um, so if we back it up to the definition of a dangerous dog, um, it is a dog that either, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death, or behaves in a manner that is, that a reasonable person will believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person, or to a domestic or owned animal.
Which I strongly feel.
And the dog did that the first time.
Okay.
That's what we have the video of.
Well, and he's, she's growled at my dog prior to this. So this is a three and a year, three and a half year ongoing situation. I did the neighborly thing. I spoke to them in person. They promised they would keep her tied, keep her under control. It hasn't happened. It falls on deaf ears. I too would hate to see the dog put to sleep. If there's another alternative, if they can find a new home for her, I'd be okay with that. I just don't want to have to deal with this anymore. I'm done. I went into fight-or-flight mode and almost got hit by oncoming traffic. And I shouldn't have to worry like that.
Yeah, it's awful. I understand, Kim. Yeah. So I feel like we've we've already done... Wait, no, you were, where were you reading those from, Eric? Oh, here we are. I feel like we've already done one and two. We've asked them to, the dog be restrained, and we've already asked them that it be kept with with the owner, or in a fenced area. Um, so should we do that adding? Do we think that we do that, and then adding a muzzle, and then offer a fine? Go ahead, Terry.
I do believe we have to deal with a dangerous dog first.
Yes. Okay. Um, so I would make a motion to deem Dixie a female dog who resides at 12 Birch Hill Road with, sorry, I'm going back to my other documents, so I get the name right, Sue and John Verovik's. A dangerous dog, based on evidence provided at today's hearing. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um... This isn't gonna stop. She's not gonna buy a muzzle for that dog. So she blames John for this, when she was the one out there with this dog. So do we, um... Do we request a fine? If we request fines, what is our authority to hold that up? Do we request fines, or do we threaten to remove the dog, and what?
Once we deem the dog dangerous, we have seven options to choose from. We can choose one or all. I guess if you choose euthanasia, you can get rid of the first six, but...
Yeah, I see the... Oh, is there a new one that just came in?
No, I was just gonna say, if you want to give credit call, it looks like he's on standby. If you have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
So, the Act authorizes the issuance of fines for failure to comply with orders. A fine of not more than $500 for imprisonment for not more than 60 days. Or both. Or for a first, for a first offense, a fine of not more than $1,000 for imprisonment for not more than 90 days for both a second or subsequent.
So could we do, is this the second? We could do a fine of $1,000?
No, this is the...
First, as a dangerous dog.
This would be the first offense of the order that was issued by the Select Board in response to us being a nuisance dog, and that it was not restrained by an adult to prevent something happen.
Okay.
So, um, we have the option of a fine, then we have the option of the other six remedies if we don't choose euthanasia.
So it's really the other four, because we've already done one and two.
Um, did we get one and two?
Yes.
Did, uh... Yep, we did one. And we did two.
But it hasn't been acknowledged that the fence has been built.
Right.
I feel that we've given them a chance to comply. They laughed us off, so let's hit them in the pocketbook. And hit them hard, as hard as we can under the law. Just to make an example for other people with dogs that we aren't gonna put up with us.
So I think the highest we can do is the 500. Um, I think, uh, number six does not apply. That has to do with it being fixed. Um, number five has to do with micro, I'm not really sure. Keep the, provide the licensing authority with information about the dog to be identified. That doesn't really... So the other one we have is four, which has to do with requiring documented proof of insurance, which doesn't really do anything for our situation right here. Um, and three is the muzzle.
What that does is it requires them to have to report their dog to the insurance company. Okay.
And that their dog has been declared dangerous.
Yes. They need to do that. Okay, so that's...
Because then I have recourse. Yeah, she does it again. Okay.
Well, I think between those two, the $500 fine and the having to get the insurance policy,
Okay.
may encourage to put up the fence as requested.
So we reiterate our, our previous request um, with the attached $500 fine, if not followed in 30 days, and a request to, um, provide documented proof of no less than $100,000 insurance for claims resulting.
That if, and I would further go, that if in 60 days, they have not complied with fencing and appropriate shelter to put the dog in, that they will turn the dog over to the Animal Control Officer for euthanasia. If you're not gonna do it, then you don't do it. If you're gonna do it, show us that you're gonna do it, and move on.
And in regards to the fencing, it spells out pretty much the parameters of what the fencing is supposed to be.
Yeah.
It's not, you know, what, I don't even know what they have up to this point.
So, I'm not a huge fan of going full boat on a fine. I think the fine, to me, is more of an attention-getter, right? You've been fined, we've done our job. Um, you know, uh, we as a town are in, I don't look at us as being in a position that we need fine money or even want to play with it, but the fact is, I believe the board should issue a fine of some sort, and we should, what I would like to see is come out of this hearing with is not only the action to the homeowner, but I would still like to see the homeowner come back to a Select Board, homeowner and dog owner come back to a Select Board meeting to acknowledge, we catch your letter, and we understand where you're at. We can't make them, we can just ask them to review.
Do you want to make a motion? Because that's a lot of, that's a lot of stuff. I'm gonna pass this to you.
Okay, so I think, um, maybe give me a moment to write some stuff out.
All right.
Does, uh, can we go back, and the only thing I'd like to do is go back in the notes and see, what did we prescribe for fencing?
We had just said, um... It's with, within, uh, the dog within 500 feet of any public way in the town of Lanford, or on any property owned by any other person, including public ways of the town, unless it is secured behind a fence or held on a leash by a responsible adult. So we weren't specific about fencing.
We weren't specific about the fencing, okay.
So we can, I think if you, your motion includes one, two, three, and then add on to that, um, the fine and an invitation to a Select Board meeting, and a 60-day...
So, um, I think we, uh, to me, it's sort of full-tote, so I am, uh, my motion would be to put in place a $200 fine, and see that the owner complies with items one through six under the Dangerous Dog Complaint, and that they show, demonstrate that they've done that within 60 days, or that they subsequently turn the animal over to the ACO for humane euthanization.
You want to go six? That's...
One through six.
Okay.
If she's been fixed, she's been fixed. If she hasn't been fixed, that's all it says. Number six is, you gotta be fixed.
Okay, so second for discussion. So, um, did we get everything in there that we wanted to? Um, this is specific. Um, did you ask for an invitation for her to come back and address the board?
I did not.
Do we want to include?
Do you want to amend it as such?
We want to include that in there?
If you so move.
So I would amend the motion to include that, um, uh, the, I can't say their last name, Verovik's. Um, respond to an invitation, uh, to, um, meet with the Select Board. Um, to, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Acknowledge the receipt of...
Just to have a discussion about, uh, their dog being declared a dangerous dog, right?
Yes, what he said. Is there a second for the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? On favor, Mary?
Um, are you doing as KP Law suggests, I move based on the following facts, uh, abused at this public hearing, including but not limited to whatever has happened. We find the dog a dangerous dog by reason of...
We did that already.
We did that part, okay. I missed it, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye? Um, now the motion is on Eric's motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, um, we'll have to refer this to, uh, ACO, do you issue the fine, or does the police chief issue the fine? So let me pause, well, continue the hearing. I'm gonna go down and get the police chief and just have her...
So I think...
Who serves the knowledge of this, of this...
Oh. Hold on. Um, in the bottom, it says, "No order shall be issued directing that a dog deemed dangerous be removed from the town or city in which the owner of the dog resides." Can we not then issue, we might have to change our motion?
Yeah, it does sound like it.
I'm confused. Too many motions.
Yeah, it's deemed dangerous, so it can't be removed from the town. So we can't place it in another home in another town.
Oh, is that for the owner?
Oh, so when he said remove to be euthanized, then that was, okay. I understand. Oh, I hate that that's in there. That makes me feel so bad. Okay. Um, I just want to read this fine print to make sure that we got, we reminded that the sample votes and proposals are used.
When I did, Dixie was picking up from her after, and she told you on the back door to call her, and I refused. I made no contact with her. I'm done.
You're going with flip-flops already, huh?
Okay, not that it has to be decided tonight, but, uh, Terry, if you would just have a meeting with the police chief and, um, rationalize out who has the authority to issue the fine, and together, you have a path forward.
Okay. Um, so I guess I would make a motion to adjourn the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. I hope that helps.
I hope it works.
Well, I'd rather see someone build a fence and keep the dog safe, and enjoy the dog, than...
That's just it.
Unfortunately, it's not the dog's fault.
In the same issue, you can still put the electronic shock collars on. I mean, that's what we do with our dog. She can roll on for our property, but when I said home, boom, she came home. And that's just the way it is.
Even with a dog that's slightly aggressive, I wouldn't even trust a shock collar.
They start running sideways. We can set it high enough that it gets their attention.
All she has to do is wave that thing, and it's just, it's okay.
No, I'd say even our dog, you know, she, in her first couple weeks, disobeying enough, as soon as she held up the collar to put it on, and you see her eyes go like, man.
Joanne, would you make sure that you note in the record that the deliver, um, their notice was delivered and the owner failed to appear?
Yes, absolutely.
Man, you don't... So the chain, no, we asked for.
Yep. I didn't write any of that down. I'll listen to the tape and capture all of it, because I can't write that down.
These are the seven elements that we talked about. One through six is what we passed. Seven, they don't comply with 60 days.
Has to do with the OPM.
Okay.
At some point, we can go out of order.
Thank you.
Take that up.
Thank you.
Okay, so I would make a motion, oh, we've got that, and we also have, um, Jennifer with, um, we have Doug here.
Yeah, where's Doug?
Okay, is he on there?
Don't do that. It'll dig in.
Someone, I can't see Doug using Zoom. Um, and we also needed...
Jennifer.
Do we need police for that discussion, too, I feel like? Police Department? No.
No, we were talking about, they would just be informed if we could, because she was gonna do the, uh, meet your cops day, so it's just really coordinated.
Or flipping.
Yeah, if we can have the event, it would be coordinating afterwards.
Okay, so let's, uh, make a motion to move to unfinished business A, the COVID nineteen update. Is there a second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, Jennifer.
I forgot you have to do that. Um, so, I'm gonna combine the update with the, um, the?
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day.
Okay.
As far as reopening the town hall, I would really like to put that off for another week.
Okay.
At least another week before we get into that part.
Okay, that's fine.
So, Jennifer, are you saying a week before we get into that discussion or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just about opening the town hall.
Okay.
Because it's not just the select board meetings that you're going to be opening up, you've got all the other departments, so.
That's fine.
I really, and our board meets on Wednesday, so I just wanted to be able to have them involved and go through things and that. Um, plus there's more updates that are coming this week.
Okay.
So, um, as of May tenth, the large venues for indoors and outdoors can increase the capacity to twenty-five percent with submission of safety plans to the Board of Health. And any activity that's planned will have to have a safety plan submitted. Now, as of Saturday, May twenty-nine, providing that there is not a surge in COVID, gatherings will be two hundred indoors and two hundred and fifty, um, for outdoors for a public or a private setting. So, with that being said, there's really no reason you guys can't go with your plans for Memorial Day.
Okay.
Um, you know.
Excuse me, Dougie's on his way.
Thank you.
Do you want me to wait? I can wait and we can move to something, cause it's fine. I'd rather he be here.
Okay.
Because I know that there's a conflict and I'd rather he be here.
Alright.
So, I have a completely different question then, Jim, um, if I may.
Go ahead.
The twenty-five percent safety plan for indoor gathering, how does that apply to, uh, places of worship?
Um, I don't know. I honestly don't know that right now.
Do they still have to do their, uh, recommended recording of people?
They have to write out a plan, they would have to still write out a plan and submit it. And as far as writing down and that is just the best practice.
It's not required.
But I'm not sure if that's required at this time. I know that some new regulations came out on that, um.
If you could verify that, I think that would be helpful for some.
Is our church open?
No.
No.
That's too bad.
It's my understanding that they're not going to, but.
Okay.
The, I'm, my understanding, and I could be wrong, is that our church is not open because the recommended practice of having a general and the pastor just didn't want people to sign their names. So, I'm just looking for that method that if it's no longer required and you can share that, that we could at least get the places of worship back running for people that wanna go, right? You can remove that burden from the pastor. Or that self-imposed burden.
Churches are just starting to open up, but not yet again at the full capacity. So, right now, they can increase from whatever their twelve percent is to a twenty-five percent, um, that they can do following all the indoor guidelines.
Sure. So, all those, I suppose, we talked about guidelines a long time ago, so.
Yes.
Those recommendations are still in place.
Right, but they are, um, upping those and this week we'll know a lot more on that because with them already saying that things are gonna open up and fully on August first, so.
Yeah, so that would be good.
Yeah.
Just, it's nice to give people.
Yeah, give me a week and I'll.
Congregate and share their religious experience.
Um, okay, thank you Jennifer. So, Dougie, uh, we had Jennifer, Jennifer paused until you got here, so she's gonna continue talking about Memorial Day.
Who, who is yours?
Jennifer.
Oh, go ahead.
Our Board of Health Chair.
So, um, I'm just gonna go back.
Yeah.
As of May tenth, any large venues, which is Monday by the way, venues for indoors or outdoors can increase the capacity of twenty-five percent with the submission of a safety plan to the Board of Health. As of Saturday, May twenty-nine, which is in time for Memorial Day, gatherings will be two hundred indoor and two hundred and fifty outdoor for any public or private, um, setting. You're still required at all times for indoor to wear masks. Face coverings will be required outside in a public setting when it's not possible to social distance. So, you might wanna make that in part of your plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, except for when you're eating or drinking.
Sure.
So, um, you gotta, the way that we're looking at it is you just put together, you know, what, how you think this is gonna play out and what you're gonna do and then, um,
So.
What review it? I, is it the, is it the select board that does the Memorial Day or is it that?
It, the recreation department does the, um, the picnic and Dougie does the parade.
Uh, time's not on my side though, cause I usually, I didn't know where we were.
Yeah.
I know, yes or no, I didn't hear. So, now what, we're May third? I, I probably need to get the gateway band, but fire departments, I, I can talk to them all. All the other groups, scouts, all that, I, I'd have to really get busy these next few weeks. Um, I'd like to have it again, I missed it last year, but, uh,
all we had is.
All we had was Mike Wojcicki put the reef on the thing and that was it, it was three minutes. Now, you're saying people can come up on the hill and watch the ceremony?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'd like to go, I'd have to talk to Mary about putting something in the country journal and.
You have a two hundred, as of the twenty-ninth, providing there is no surge in COVID, that, um, you have a twenty, um, two hundred and fifty outdoor limitation.
We don't, oh, that, that, I don't, can't remember two hundred and fifty people up on the hill. Maybe two hundred, maybe at the biggest point, but it's usually about a hundred people.
Yeah.
Well, Doug, and I, the reason we asked you here is, we, we were asking Jennifer, we asked Jennifer for this last week, Jennifer wasn't here, so this is our first meeting and as the select board, we didn't wanna put a tremendous amount of pressure on you.
I can keep going, I mean, I go on the fire departments and they usually come and, um, sometimes even, like, scouts have faded away, but all our vets are getting older, but, uh, I can get it together, the gateway band.
Alright, so, we, we don't, to me, and this is my personal opinion, interjecting here, is that I don't think it needs to be a big extravagant effort, right? If we're gonna throw something together, it could be a, a very, you know, we, obviously the parade takes X amount of time and people end up, up at the memorial. It, I don't think it has to be long drawn out and fancy, I think we're just trying to get people back into a rhythm of being outside, seeing a parade and coming down, having a picnic, so.
We, we kind of do the same thing every year. If we have a vet that dies, we give them a flag, uh, the kids do their little essays, the band plays a number, your brother plays a number and do tasks and thank the fire department and the police department and turn sweet, what is it, thirty minutes, I'd say, thirty, forty-five minutes.
Well, that would be awesome Doug, whatever you can do and if you need any help.
Is the town parade, the picnic gonna happen after the parade?
So, that's gonna be our next discussion, um, I guess what has to happen is a rec meeting to discuss that and then we'll have to come up with a safety plan. Um, we were talking about trying to work with the, police department wanted to do something as like a community building, so we were gonna say, you know, do you guys wanna come out and flip burgers and do we hand out a meal? Do we do a pic, you know, whatever, however we can do it safely, but we're, we do wanna do something, yes.
I think you can have a picnic out there.
Yeah.
I really do, I don't think you have to hand out the meals.
Okay.
I think, I really do.
Okay.
I'll plan a meeting for them.
Yeah, just let me know.
Cause that goes hand in hand.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
The parade ends and then I say everyone, we're having our town picnic.
Yeah, put on picnic gear.
You usually see someone you haven't seen in a hundred years and.
Yeah, it's always.
So, it's a good thing, so.
The only thing that I might recommend is when it comes to the food, is that instead of having your ketchup, and I know it's a pain in the butt, but instead of having your ketchup and your mustard, um, in a thing that you just can pack it.
We're talking about handing things out, not having people hang around. I mean, kids can't play, games can, can happen, so, yeah. If we, if we do ketchup, we'll do packets.
Yeah, and we're just gonna say like, you can, you know, grab something and go sit on, you know, have a picnic with your family members.
And have somebody serve the food rather than everybody.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I think that might be.
Those would be my only.
It might be BYOK, bring your own ketchup.
Unless you put it in the little containers or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'll figure something out.
Oh.
We'll talk about it.
Brain is thinking waste, all the trash.
I just don't think it's a good idea to have the traditional where everybody crowds around here and kids are playing games and.
Grabbing handfuls of chips, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll fix that.
Next year.
Okay.
Next year, we'll be back to that.
Yeah, the kids can still play in the playground and stuff.
Yeah.
We'll just get, maybe get some hand sanitizer, put it around and stuff like that.
And then just buy the.
You can take these from here and set them out there.
Okay. Perfect, yeah, okay, we'll do that, yeah. Okay, cool, I'm excited that we're gonna go forward with it.
The, uh, the vets that were on the telephone pole, whatever happened to those, uh, I think Tom's grandfather was on there.
Oh, are they not up anymore?
No, they were all returned, cause.
Cause we got all new poles down.
Okay.
I had a bit of a faux pas last year because someone up at the highway garage said, I went up there Thursday on Memorial Day to put up the flags on, uh-oh, I forgot they changed all the poles.
Yeah.
When they did, they took the bracket.
Oh.
And it was too late and then some, I got a few complaints, but I, I went up there today, uh, this week and I put up some.
Okay.
Well, I got three of those posters at my house.
Okay.
I'm gonna use them for the.
Yeah, um, there's some that, I do it with a ladder, there's some that's tricky. And the highway department has a lift truck that they never used, now I've got.
I don't know if it's operable right now, but you'd have to talk with Rainey.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, that, that'd be a good use for it, cause I see Chester does it that way with the lift truck and just, the ones over by Sunset Rock, they're, oof. You know, it, that's, that's tricky, it's right on Route twenty-three, so anyway.
So.
So, anyway, the vets up on the telephone poles again.
Yep.
And is your husband mowing, um, crumbs? School or no?
Yeah, I'll just make sure that he has a clean for that day. So, that probably means that he'll do it like the day before, just FYI. And Katie does the flowers?
Katie does the reef, uh, there's a group, I think Mary's involved in it called the Flower Club, they used to do around, uh.
Oh, the gardening club?
Blair and all them used to.
That hasn't existed, I don't think.
Remember you guys used to put flowers, you don't have, don't do that anymore?
No.
No, and I'm trying to remember, two years ago, there were three, three women who went up.
Right.
And did it, but it wasn't a function of the garden.
Uh, I'm happier than a piggly doo-doo because, uh, because they, they cut the bushes up there and they, they were so overgrown, you couldn't see.
We ordered them to, didn't we ask for them removed?
We told them to pick the trees out.
Yeah, the ones around the stone.
It's out?
You couldn't even see the natural, uh, stone anymore and then World War One monument got knocked over and they had a.
The trees are still there.
Yeah, those were supposed to be removed.
They are removed.
They are removed.
Oh, they are, okay.
They are?
Well, you can just see the stump.
How have I not noticed that?
Have it looked? I don't know.
It's gone a while.
Really?
So, I, I don't know how the board feels about this, I'm a, I'm a fan that if the lift truck is operational, that we authorize Rainey to, uh, have one of the, uh, highway workers.
Yeah.
Help, uh, help Doug get those flags up if he needs to do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And use the, the truck for, on a weekend.
I got a bunch of brackets.
Okay.
So.
Otherwise, use it for the US bags.
I think they should. Only sure Rainey knows that that's, uh, something we'd like to pursue.
Josh, could you let Rainey know that?
Yep.
Um, Joanne, maybe, um, just reach out to Valerie, the, doing the gardens out there and just let them know that we're having Memorial Day just in case they wanna try to get something done by then? Just a thought.
I think she will, but.
Um, so, Doug, do you need us to do anything?
Uh, no, I can get everything, I can get, uh, director's apps, I can get your brother, probably, he's pretty good.
Okay.
Playing some songs and if he's not there, I mean, if the gateway band doesn't show up, we'll have your brother to.
Okay.
Who's our other singers that, uh, you gotta sing at the baseball game?
And everything else I can get together.
Um, Alyssa, do you wanna, do you want me to try Alyssa Lemmy about singing anything? Alyssa Lemmy about singing, uh?
Yeah, if, um, if we don't get the gateway band.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I live right across the street from her, right?
Yeah, if you wanna reach out.
Knock on the door, I'll find out by third day, cause I gotta go up to Gateway to give out scholarships, Thursday anyway, so, uh, we'll find out about the band.
Okay.
And I don't, did, for the, does anyone know any of the other gateway towns are having a parade this year?
I don't know, we can reach out to Chester and ask.
I think we're just being first, right? So, we're gonna, we're gonna lead the way.
So, it really shouldn't be a problem with you doing a gateway band then.
No, there'd be sight.
Our legion gives them, our legion is the only one that gives them money, we give five hundred bucks and so they should do us a favor too.
Okay, thanks Doug.
Uh, Mary, I'll leave you, voicemail, well, what? Alright, thanks everyone.
Thanks Doug.
Thank you, Jennifer, you have something else?
I do, but it has nothing to do with Board of Health. Um, the swale that's out there?
Yes.
Do you think your husband wants to?
He said he would, he told, we talked to Brett.
Okay.
He said that Brett let us know that Board of Health didn't wanna do that anymore.
It, it was never the Board of Health.
Yeah, I don't know, it was one of those weird things.
I just.
The what?
This.
The ditch?
The ditch, the Board of Health used to, oh, it was weird, it was like the way that it was separated, but yeah, he said, it's only like a couple times a summer, like, situation anyways, it's not.
Right, okay, so as long as that's off our.
It's off your plate.
Fantastic.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll just have to take seven hundred out of Board of Health budget. Sorry.
Alright, so I would make a motion to go to, um, unfinished business D, uh, review the draft scope and cost for OPM services. And we have a presentation from the Highway Fire Building Project Advisory Group.
Sorry.
D, is there a second for that?
Second, we have.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, says everyone.
Aye, alright, we'll leave it on draw there.
Alright.
So, you have a proposal, PM scope draft, looks like this, two pages. This is the, I think, the third or fourth revised version. The building group sat down, um, with the design team, particularly David, who's with us, uh, on the call, um, to go over their, uh, scope, we went up, we went over their first draft, made some, uh, changes in areas that we thought, um, you know, needed some changing and of which ultimately came, uh, to this conclusion here. Um, I'm gonna just pass it to David if Tom and, and, and TJ doesn't mind. And we let David just kind of go over the, the proposal and then that you guys can share what we've discussed and what you guys recommend, um, to the select board.
That sounds good.
At our last meeting. I'd just. You can jump in anywhere.
Not for this topic.
Josh was offering to let David, um, explain the proposal, do you wanna start there or do you wanna start with me, Nick?
He's, he's on the line, the, the OPM.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Nice to meet you.
Hello.
David Schrestinian, is that correct? That's, that's perfect.
Wow.
You, you pronounced it perfectly. That was, I think, ten before I could do that, but, um, it's a pleasure to meet all of you. Uh, just for the proposal, I can share the screen of the scope, the written scope, I can share the screen of the timeline and the hours and the dollars associated with it, how would you like it to be presented? I don't know what folks have in front of them and I don't know what you can see on a screen.
They, they do have a copy in front of them.
Okay. Alright, then I'll look at what I have here. We, in response to the request for qualifications, made our initial proposal in phases. And we had a phase one pre-designed, which gets us to the point of getting an agreement as to what the project's scope would be to make sure that the program serves the intended purpose, that, uh, the facility was being, at a conceptual level, being planned, being laid out in a way that was really gonna work for you, you were gonna get the type. At a conceptual level being planned, being laid out in a way that was really gonna work for you, you were gonna get the type of. Building and materials and the quality that you need. And we would, um, prepare that as a conceptual du- uh, design. Uh. Put together a schedule of how long it would be to get a design team, design it and then to build it and bring it online for you. And very importantly. Get together a, uh, cost estimate of what we, we would estimate it to ultimately cost. With construction and what we call the soft costs, the, uh, the design and and the management services. That was phase one to get us through pre-design. And we had a phase two, which was the design process. Um, and that's if it's authorized, we go to the pre-design, we bring it to the town. You authorize it, we move to the design and that's where we go out and we do a selection. Excuse me, a, um, a surement, a request for qualifications from design team. We do that in accordance with the chapter one forty-nine legislation. And then we would hire the design team and then we go through the process of designing the facility. To, uh, get it to drawings that can actually be bid, there's certain phases along the way. Schematic design is a milestone or a set of documents, we price those, make sure that we're staying on, uh, within budget. Then we go to, uh, the next phase, which is design development and that gets another budget check. And along the way, we're reviewing the draw drawings, making sure it's consistent with programmatic needs in line with the budget. Ultimately, we get to the point where we have bid documents and there's a phase three for construction. Initially, with the R F Q, we had also posed on that, my understanding at this time, after having several discussions, is that's going to come later. Right now, we're talking about. Pre-design. And, uh, and design and, um, those are certain stages so that you can. Um. Monitor, manage us as if we go along and make decisions about moving forward. But does that, um, are there any questions about the scope before I turn it over to the fee proposal? Okay.
Hi.
Go ahead.
I'm just looking, I'm sort of looking at your project plan for pre-design and design phase, so you're saying it will be November of. Next year before we're actually bidding to build the building.
That, that is what we are at, um, forecasting. Now, when we get a design team onboard, we can revisit the schedule. It would be good if we could try to tighten that up a bit. Um. See if we could, uh, maybe take some of the hours out of it. Um, but that's what we're forecasting right now. We have, uh, four months to get through the conceptual design and approval. We have a couple of months in there for the architect selection process, that's the end of pre-design. So that's a six-month process, um, we're starting that. In June, it'll be June or July when you, uh, depending when you authorize us and we get going. And then we had a design phase of three months of schematic drawings, three months for the design development. Four months for the construction documents, so that's a ten-month design period, that takes you out to next September. And then we had a couple of months for the bidding and the awarding, so next November of twenty twenty-two, you would have a contractor.
So somewhere in the scope or schedule of. April of next year, potentially May, uh, the town would need to have some kind of a. Uh. Ballpark-ish enough estimate so that we could go to town meeting to authorize any loans or anything, because if we go to November. It would help us avoid a special town meeting, right?
Okay, so the way that we've laid this out now is, uh. We have, if we have a design designer onboard, an architect onboard in December. We were looking at doing a schematic design estimate in February. Move the, usually. And then we would do a design development estimate in May, so that's two estimates that we would be doing. And if you have a milestone of a town meeting and you need that beforehand, we could. We could, um, adjust this schedule, that we have the timing of when we do the activities and estimate the design as it is. So that you can have some level of assurance that it's on budget when you go to town meeting.
Yeah, town meeting would just need to have a good range, fairly tight range of authorizing any, uh. Borrowing that would need to be to build, you know, to contract to build a building, right?
Understood, so we would be hap- happy to take the schedule and incorporate town meetings and other. Any other decisions or or you have to do to, see if we can make the schedule work with that.
Question me?
Yeah, so if. All things considered equal, everything's in place by the end of November in twenty twenty-two. We wouldn't start actual construction on this until following spring twenty twenty-two, is that correct?
Nah, not necessarily true, I mean, we gotta do some landscaping and tree removal to be done in the winter, I mean, but you're right, but. Pouring pouring a foundation stuff wouldn't be in those earnings.
Which I think is lower in Amy's ways.
Right, this will be your twenty-three.
It depends on the contractor. Uh, a lot of them, my son's job, he pour concrete all the way.
Yeah.
It's just what you add to the concrete.
Yeah, and they just, they have to put match down and heat it so it'll cure, but it can be done.
That's what we're shooting for is.
Yep. Put up some debts.
We we would, we would, um. As as we get into it, we would also come up with a construction schedule and the point that I heard, which is a good point. Is you'd wanna minimize the cost of winter conditions. Which is money you have to spend to, um, allow you to do foundation work or any other type of work in the cold weather. You don't get any real benefit from it other than advancing the schedule. So you would balance. Winter conditions costs versus saying waiting until the spring. And, um. You'd wanna look at trying to minimize winter conditions for foundations work, you would wanna have your facility available to you when you, when you need it. So those are the, and you can also wanna look at the escalation, just, um. As as you get into the future and you get inflation, there's there's escalation costs, the more you push projects up, so you wanna balance all of that. And and we would do that. We present options. Did that answer that?
Yes, thank you. Um, does anyone else have any questions? I don't think I do, um, you don't need a motion, what is our next step?
So, right now, what we have in front of you is the scope, um, and cost of which I'm going to, um. Draft into a contract, send to K P, make sure it is approved to form. Ideally, um, by next meeting, which I won't be here next week Monday, by the way.
Okay.
We'll talk about that later, but, um, by next meeting, you'll have a contract in front of you, you can approve, but. What I wanted to do here is to allow the space to be able to have a conversation with David. If you have any questions on the scope before we start, you know.
Okay.
Putting that, those details into the contract, so.
Perfect, thank you, yeah, I I don't think I have any questions, I mean, it looks, you know, incredibly organized and clear-cut.
So I have a question.
Okay.
Uh. David, you have this down as budget estimates, do you plan on, is this the plan here to turn this into a firm fixed price contract payable upon deliverables? Or are we just gonna do time and materials?
I think that, uh, my expectation was this would be time and material up to this number. So that. We would charge you for the hours we worked, um, to those numbers, if we thought it was gonna be more for whatever reason. We'd try to give you, uh, advance notice and then you would have a discussion and and would, uh. Would manage it, but I did not see this as a lump sum. I thought this would be something that we would, uh, we would manage the hours.
Well, I'm, I guess, I look at, I mean, firm fixed price isn't necessarily lump sum, it can be paid out accordingly over months, but I. I was wondering if our budget estimate is in fact, if that's the limit, then that's in essence what we have, is a firm fixed price contract not to exceed.
Time and materi-, yeah, not to exceed, that's that's the idea.
Okay.
You get billed for the hours work and, uh, up to that amount.
So what would be, I guess that's my question then, so if we get billed for the hours up to that amount, but at the end of this, we don't have the product, what's the remedy?
Well, the product that you would have, um. At the end of pre-design is you would have a, uh, you'd have a process where you had a, uh. Program. A budget, a schedule and, um, you would have a design team onboard.
So we have.
And.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sorry.
It's our product, okay, I'm with you there.
Okay, so that's the pre-design and at the end of the, um, the design phase. Product is is a, of course, a, uh, biddable design, um, in line with your budget and getting a contractor onboard, so. We're not producing drawings per se, but we are managing a process that. Due to those deliverables.
So is there a, uh, so that begs the question and, uh. And Josh, you can answer this too, um, so within this design, development and construction documents, there's typically design documents or construction documents, so. We will be paying for those in addition to your services, yeah?
That's, yes, those would be a design that the architect engineer's fees.
Okay.
So we're gonna have an overall project budget, largest line item in the budget is is the construction itself. But you'll also have a line item in there for the design team, you'll have a line in there for the pro- our project management. And you'll you'll have other costs that the town will have that you'll put into an overall town project budget, total project budget.
But. Including, I I'm just trying to make sure, so it's more for folks in the room and even my own head, right, is that. When we get through the design development and through the construction documents, although we paid for. Part of your job here is to make sure that those documents are delivered to us, right, even though we pay for them through somebody else.
Our job's to manage the design team, to manage their schedule.
Yeah.
To, uh, yes, and to check that what they are drawing is indeed in accordance with the. Scope that you bought, that you, that, uh, from from the quest for qualifications, that it's the program, that it meets the budget. Um. Yes, we'll be doing check estimates. But we're managing the design team.
Now, now David, uh, once, once the design and everything is all all set up and that. Uh, you're gonna have people that are on site during construction too, no, we're not to the construction phase yet, right?
Right, we don't, that that would, that's phase three.
Okay.
So we haven't, we haven't really, um, we haven't gone into that too much, we did initially. Make, it was part of the original, uh. The original first pass, but we said we'd get through these two phases first, that's what Josh, probably, how we want to approach it.
Yeah, we didn't want, we didn't wanna put the cart before the horse, obviously, the goal is to get to construction phase, uh.
Right.
And when we first met, he gave us the full manual, which was very helpful for us, because we've got to learn from David, you know. What's available to us and what we need now versus what we need later. Um, and also we shared with him our own. You know, conceptual design of which, you know, when we worked with, um, I forget the name of these guys. Um, of what we're looking for and it it helps, um, these guys to kind of further sharpen the scope of the project, so. We kept the construction out so we didn't feel too overwhelmed and thought that maybe, hey, look, we just wanna focus on the steps we need to take to get to construction. Keep the simple version of the condo, yeah.
Mary, question?
All, again, all things being equal, if we get through the design approvals of these stations, thematic design development, we get through that. And we hit the do not exceed figure or stay below it, we're good, but if it should be necessary to spend more money. There would be an addendum to the contract, I forget what you call it, but that, the the town and Dave would come together and do that.
Exactly, it's still different than, remember when we were doing the small bridge, this contract.
Yeah.
And, uh, there was an unforeseen issue with, so we had to come back to a select board meeting.
Talked about it or double range.
Everyone understood what was going on and we moved forward to get.
Just to shore up.
Very similar.
Do you think you have a tree?
Yes, yes.
The control aspect of the year.
Petray the ass on it, it's not, sorry.
Oh.
The triasco.
It was like a million dollars or whatever, we're good. We're much better now.
Just keep spending, just keep spending.
I think, I think we're all set.
All right. Um, I'll work on that then, David, I'll forward to the draft and, uh. Yeah, we'll have a target date for Monday to get this.
That's, that's great, thank you very much.
Thank you for being patient with us.
Hey, folks, if, um, you're set with me, I'll wish you all a good night.
You're all set, I appreciate it.
Thank you, babe.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, thank you for the job.
Um, what's the forty-five thousand, six twenty-eight plus ninety-two, we got a calculator, do it real quick.
It's about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Yeah, right there.
What was approved on Tom Florida transfer from building stabilization was a hundred and twenty thousand?
Uh-huh.
So what we're gonna contract for is this forty-five thousand, sixty-eight.
Okay.
And then coming July one, we'll have enough in our capital projects to cover the difference of eighteen thousand. Unless you wanna go through other means to cover that, you know, we could put a high level of warrant, amend it, however you. But that was a strategy.
You have to, um, I just. I I don't mind the strategy, but I think in town meeting we put in front of the floor that up to a hundred and twenty K for what, what did we save?
So we were thinking that the estimate was that the.
I'm just sticking with the motion that was on the floor.
The motion was to transfer a dollar amount from building stabilization, it wasn't, don't spend.
For the purpose of, right?
To to contribute towards.
We didn't say not to exceed, we said for the purpose of, right?
I don't think we can't say not to exceed.
Well, I just wanna clarify, because, you know, this is the, how do I say it, this is one of those things where, uh, a nice. I'm gonna give a shout out to my buddy Dick, who I saw at the, uh, the, uh. Transfer station this weekend, this is where someone like Dick will come out and say, hey, this is what the town authorized, that was the warrant said, don't exceed it, right? I just wanna make sure the language in the warrant said to do this, if we, I wanna make sure that it didn't say not to exceed, right?
Well, we didn't say not to, since Mark just didn't, he says not, that's not.
No, yeah.
When you're doing the votes, but nevertheless.
I just checked the base on it, right, I just don't, uh, some of the.
But if you want though, if you want us to add an article in the warrant to transfer the difference from building stabilization. However you decide, whatever strategy you pursue, it's the the goal here is to.
We still got a bunch of free cash, Dylan.
You can.
I just figured the best idea would be exhaust a hundred and twenty, pay the difference out of.
I just figured the best idea would be exhaust a hundred and twenty, pay the difference out of capital projects.
I have no issues with that, I just wanna make sure that.
One of, one of the things that, you know, we're, we're going with prefab buildings, okay?
Yeah, we're going so much slower than.
Most of them are architecturally designed by the company, okay, so we, when we start this, we're gonna be looking at prefab buildings, there's always deals out there, I know when I was looking at the cemetery building, there were always deals out there that, you know, and they, they will scream, but, you know, and like raining and the fire department that they're, they're gonna, no, they, they know what we're gonna need and things may come in a lot less, because you're dealing with free, 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 yeah, prefab.
Not that I'm being a naysayer, but I really think we missed our window by about nine months ago to get a building in here, really, really inexpensive for a really high.
I agree.
It's just, it just happened, right, because we see construction materials are climbing and, so, bummer.
All right, um, all right, so let's go backwards to start back to act item. We've got some appointments to make. Get you back on track. Um, okay, so we have an appointment, so I'll make a motion, we'll second the discussion for each of these, so a motion to appoint.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
I make a motion to appoint the personnel slated in B, C, D, E, F, G, and H per the agenda.
Now I have to change the name all the way down.
Fine. All right, that's just it.
Kermit emotion, Kermit emotion, Kermit emotion, oh, now it's Eric.
I would second that.
All right, that works.
Appoint this late.
Uh, okay, so discussion, we've got John Piper for conservation for a one-year term, no, three-year term, Jason Ford for building commissioner for a one-year term, Teresa Donovan reappointing animal control, one-year term, Mary Crownum Arts Council for a three-year term. Is that a reappointment, Mary?
Yeah, and the dates, um, for whatever reason, the Mass Cultural Council has they're not going by June, July first to June thirtieth, so Ashley and I will have different dates.
Okay.
And I'll get them to join.
Then we've got Eric as our CPA, Decates Conservation, oh, but I forgot he's gonna do another term.
I have his ACM.
And Ashley is Arts Council, is she new or is she?
She's new, she's Gateway Regional High School senior, she's graduating this year.
Oh, that's so cool.
We thought it would be, and she is absolutely terrific.
Oh, that's great, I'm glad to hear that.
And speaks well.
Arts Council in on our, on our thing up there, the remake of the that would be neat for Arts Council to be involved in that, it's artistic.
There you go.
Landscape, architecture, and arts, they go together.
Is there any more discussion on that motion?
Motion to amend dates as Mary Crown for Arts Council members has given to us on return from Mary Crown.
I'll second that, uh, in favor of the motion, any discussion on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second motion.
In favor of the motion, motion?
Aye.
Aye. Can't sign my name and say aye.
All the comments are done. See how fast.
No, 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 today, yeah, for today. You know, there's a lot more coming.
Fell swoop.
All right, next up, we're going to take action on the contract between the town and Mass Department of Fire Services for a grant of eight thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars for the fire department.
You, what, that's crazy talk.
Thank you.
It is what it is, thanks to Chief Mother, he landed that.
Is Chief up there now or no?
No, he's not.
Shout out.
That's awesome, so, um, can you remind me what this specifically is?
Is that for the call out gear?
Um.
Or is that the breathers? Can't remember which one it was.
Um, do you remember, I think it was for turnout gear?
Yeah, I believe so. Cause he's got, he's got another one, I think that's federal for the SCBA, this is turnout gear.
Turnout gear. So I think that was one of those items that we had slated for free cash.
Uh, I think we still needed to buy more.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's just that it's, he was able to get a little something, it's nowhere near.
Probably had a ten or twenty case slated on free cash, so just gonna tick those off there, see if we can stop him, or at least have that discussion with him before we take that to town floor.
There you go. All right, so I would make a motion to approve the contract between the town and the Mass Department of Fire Services for a grant of eight thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars.
Second.
Any discussion?
And Bingo was his name.
On favor?
Aye.
All right.
You got a question over there?
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mary.
Um, I saw someplace that Eric was not going to be the accountant, but he was gonna be the consultant.
He's always been our consultant.
Does it make a difference?
No.
I thought that it changed.
No, it's the same. Yeah, nothing's changed.
He's, he's an accounting consultant that we hired at his firm to do the accounting, so it's just we're renewing his contract.
But we, we have to point some, so we point him as the principal.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's right, because we have to have.
Uh, what's our fax, oh.
Fax number, anyone?
It's like oh nine hundred or something?
What's that's number, do you know?
So yeah, let me ask you a question, old McDonald.
Out of one.
No, no, the dog you were just talking about, Bingo was his name-o, was the dog named Bingo or the farmer?
Yeah, do you know? Really don't know.
Who was the farmer, had a dog, and Bingo was his name-o, was that the dog or the farmer? Yeah. Nobody can answer that question.
You gotta be French.
All right, let's see. Oh nine oh eight, I knew there was an O and a nine in it.
I was thinking Bingo was a lot like the target dog, only not for this.
Josh, is your email administrator?
But it is an interesting.
Administrator. Do you want me to add Chief as a signee?
So if you add him as a, to give him signatory, and you've done it in the past, um, it'll just be a vote to this body, otherwise, any amended to that contract, whatever, has to come back to this body.
So don't add him, so just put myself for?
Yeah, you could just put your name.
For Josh.
Oh, Josh.
Yeah, just, so remember, it's, you're, you vote to authorize and, you know, whoever, if it's Josh, it's Chief, vote to sign these contracts.
Yep.
Um.
Most, did you put Josh or the Chief on there?
I put myself on there.
Yeah, it was just, it's fine.
Doesn't matter, it's gotta come back.
You guys meet every Monday anyway, so if there's a change of anything, come back and we agenda.
Um, okay, next up, we're on unfinished business, the only thing we didn't talk about was Shepherd Farm, do we have an update on that?
Yeah, the only update there, you remember we submitted an expression of interest to the Commonwealth's one-stop shop program? We got some feedback from the Commonwealth, it turns out that all that was submitted met the criterias for what's called the site readiness program. Uh, the proposal was to leverage this particular grant so that we can do some sort of feasibility analysis on what's possible with the, the whole Shepherd's farm.
Oh, cool.
Area there.
Yep.
Uh, the portal opens May twelve, closes June third, I met with the historical commission, Shannon from the Piney Valley Planning Commission was present, great discussion, Shannon's all over it, so, coming May twelve when the portal opens, um, we'll be working together to some, some sort of, um, proposal for that site readiness program grant.
Which is what, how much?
I, I.
No, okay, whatever, that's fine.
Yep, cool.
I don't know, Norris.
Finally, some movement on Shepherd Farm, that's great, okay.
That's the update on that, we'll keep that on the agenda so that it's always in the forefront here, we don't forget about it.
Thank you. Um, what other unfinished business for you, do you have for us, Josh?
Other unfinished business, I do have a new business item, I guess.
Okay, so let me just do these new. First, do you mind?
Go for it.
Okay, uh, all department expense report. I did not see anything, let me just take a trip look, we should be at about eighty-five-ish, I think. Eighty-ish.
Tomorrow Bart is gonna forward me the year-end instructions for all departments, so we can deal with any any deficits that might be in the budget, for whatever reason, to organize finance committee select board meetings for line item transfers, among other things that, you know, we have to do the transition into the next year, so what, I guess this is what I would propose on that, because we, we have the authority, we wanna. Jointly with finance, yeah.
Yeah, so I would just make it a consent, if you guys.
Thank you.
Yes, they all knew that we got a question about a specific one.
As of now, everything seems, I don't even think we have anything.
I'm just saying from a buying perspective.
As needed, as it appears, we have that collectability, we meet every Monday anyway, so it helps with the planning.
I'm just thinking of the, the actions we did last, last fall or last year, where Sarah just said we had four of them.
Right.
Just what it is, but moving.
Yeah, everything else looks good.
Trust our finance community, finance.
Water, yeah, well, those brakes killed them, they're at one forty for racing.
Well, yeah, remember that's.
But that's definitely spending, go ahead.
Yeah, so once that, once that finishes.
Okay.
There will be an article, there is already an article on the warrant, I just, the number is blank.
Okay.
So we know what the final bill is gonna be.
Um, all right, then we've got the warrant. Do you need it signed tonight or no?
No, no, that's just the updated version, I updated the figures, it includes um, where's my warrant? Where's my copy, here it is. We'll see Article two, Gateway Regional School District went back to a level fund amount, zero percent increase. Um, I didn't include here the building inspectors request, what's it called, vehicle, abandoned vehicle?
Yep.
I think if you guys don't mind, if you can just save that for a later meeting, I'll just flat out, we're trying to investigate these things, I know the town clerk's office is, too.
Okay, that's fine.
Certainly, we'll keep it on our to-do list, actually, we'll write it up on the board for a possible special town meeting.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Yes.
Um, the only, I, I forwarded this to council this morning, so I'll wait to hear additional feedback you might have, the only thing we need really is the update on annual town election. Um, which is just for the posting purposes, right? Right? That's just for posting purposes.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
Go ahead, and we need the budget.
Article five of the warrant, this is to give the town both reasonable appropriate.
That's the newest one, yeah.
From available funds, some of the hundred eighty K solar pilot payments to the building stabilization camp.
So I, I didn't know how to reference, so that hundred eighty, that's the solar pilot payment, so I.
That was not a human for threat.
Where that is anticipated line of growth.
Yes.
So I met with the, we had a financial team meeting, and I had asked Eric, do you want me to put it in the actual budget, he said, just put it as an article on the warrant, and later we'll add it on the budget, let's prove. But either way, it's the same difference, more or less, um, but, so that's, that's just, that hundred eighty thousand is because we're collecting a hundred eighty thousand solar pilot payments in Washington. So I wanted to reference, you know, people know what that is, that's what that is, I didn't know what other title would give it besides solar pilot.
Okay.
It's not a payment, though, it's.
I, I just wanna be careful, and I, I understand the reasoning, but, okay, I'm trying to put myself in a position of somebody sitting out on the floor, right? And somebody sitting out on the floor says, oh, so we're now directing specific income payments to come to town, specific accounts, which could, that can get to be a sticky widget, right, so I mean, I like it as a reference, but I would.
Want me to check, just take it out? And then we'll just explain it on the floor?
You could do that.
That might be better, I mean, you could put a note there that, you know, uh, where you have hearing finance committee recommendation, you can say this is a hundred eighty thousand dollars of new growth that is anticipated that we just wish to direct to the building stabilization.
Like some sort of note or something.
Right, rather than because otherwise, because you could call it a hundred eighty thousand dollars of new growth income, which wouldn't, okay, whatever, right, there's a lot of ways to characterize it, when it should just be, hey, this is the amount of money we put into the location.
I mean, I can just, we can take it out as an article, and I'll just leave it as a number in the Excel spreadsheet that we had before.
I, I just
if it's easy.
It's a great pocket point to tell people, hey, this is income from the older super pilot fields, but then also, I don't you could leave the town to start picking and choosing what money income from what one place goes to another, and boy, that's just not me, we wanna have it. And, and one of the things that, you know, it says to raise and appropriate, well, right away, people thinking we're spending that.
I'm just gonna take it out, I'm gonna call the church and just say, hey, well, to make it easier for all of us, I can, if, on the, so you don't have the budget in front of you, but on our spreadsheet, at the bottom, there's that line item, transfer to building stabilization, and we can raise right there at a hundred eighty thousand, that's how we had it reflected before, I don't know why he changed his mind last minute.
Yeah, I just.
I think it's the same difference, no matter what direction.
Because I'm not, I'm not gonna transfer this, I'm gonna raise, this is under, it's new income, you're raising it appropriately, you're not gonna transfer that, so.
Ah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
So I think we can help.
So what do you think, what do you, what do you suggest? Do you want to just write the note?
I think if, uh, so I think one of it, we helped Dave out a little bit, right, we're, if we've decided on two, uh, three, four, five, those are all raising appropriate, those aren't, we're not transferring from there, we're raising inappropriate.
Well, this okay, yeah, so this ideally would be the same thing, the hundred eighty thousand is to raise an appropriate.
Right, yeah. Now, we can have the discussion when someone says, why is it specifically there, you can say, it's new income that we got late in the process, we're identifying an account to send it to, because it's new income, and you go, oh, okay, great. I mean, we're getting, someone's getting a tax bill for it, right, so that's where we intend to send it, yes, ma'am?
Could we eliminate the acronym and put in payment and lieu of taxes?
No, because people don't understand that one either.
Well.
Then they think they're paying taxes. Right?
If they ask, we could just tell them, it means payment and lieu of taxes or something.
Transfer from free cash, free cash, free cash. Okay, water department, water department, water department, municipal light. See if the town will vote to appropriate. Uh, isn't this the
Yeah.
Article sixteen, aren't we rate, aren't we bonding that? Five hundred thousand?
That is, um, authorization for borrowing up to five hundred thousand.
Yeah. Okay, appropriate by borrowing, yes, okay, yeah. By law, by law, by law, somewhere I feel we're short on this.
This is it?
Yeah, because I don't see an article to fund the town.
Yep, it's in the beginning, it's like two million, right there, Article seven.
Oh, okay, it's just ran across two pages.
So this is the four million seven minus the one point six, the one twenty, the thirty, the one, no, not the.
Yeah, so that's reasonable appropriate as well, there's no transfer, right?
So, wanted to make sure we didn't have the same mistake as we did last year there.
Okay.
All right. All right, um.
We got it all talked through while you're around.
Perfect. Oh, Mary, go ahead.
Article nineteen, um, we need to include the Mass General Law reference on that. Which I think I sent you, Josh.
All right, I just, is that the one where?
That's, no, don't have license fee if you're seventy or over.
I think I might have this, I'll, I'll look into that, Mary. I think that was Mark's. I think this was, uh, Mark said it's. I think this was, uh, Mark's edits, see the town vote to amend by laws, dog control, internet news subsection. And NGO.
The Attorney General's Office would prefer a reference.
Okay.
So.
Tom, were you able to hear okay? Were you able to hear okay when they, when he was talking, cause we, they've been messing with the volume of Josh and.
No, I can hear them all good.
Okay, okay.
So, Mary. A person over seventy is in charge for a license. But if I'm sixty-nine married to a seventy-year-old and the seventy-year-old dies in my house, then I have to pay for the dog?
Oh my God, are you seriously gonna be that person right now?
Yeah, there you go.
This will not take effect for.
Do you have plans?
It's minimal, how many people does?
It's gonna happen, I mean, it's gonna happen.
Thirty-four?
Thirty-four.
For five dollars, who cares?
I know, it will happen.
For five dollars, who cares?
Alright. Uh, the next one, the request from the building commissioner, uh, that one we're moving.
Table?
Table for now. Alright, Josh, what do you have for new business?
Well, there's, there's a lot of new business.
Going back to the, uh, Cemetery Commissioner for two years, that's, uh, Peter Sparks, he was, he was elected last year.
That's the old, that's such a placeholder, that's not the new best. Don't worry about that.
Don't worry about that one.
Okay, not worried, alright.
No, he's in good shape.
Alright, what do you got?
The only new business really is just the signing of this registration form, um, the fire department was able to get a free beater pickup truck.
Oh, nice.
From Tom, remind me what town it was.
Department of. Natural, it used to be Natural Resources, they got, they keep changing their name.
Gold, it's, it's old, but brand new, is that any sense?
It's two thousand and five, and it's got something like fifty-some thousand or less on it.
In condition, yeah.
Fifty-one, two thirty-six, and it's gold.
Hmm?
It's gold, yeah.
Oh, even cooler.
Flicky bling gold?
I got a picture of it.
I'm a little jealous.
It's, it's shown to be red.
What? No, how about gold with red like fire?
Yeah, red flames.
Red flame.
You still talk to the fire chief, do you?
So the whole intent, I guess, with this vehicle is, um, here it is.
What's it replace or change?
It's not, it's, uh. The guys currently, when they go out and they use their fire hose, and there's carcinogens and all that stuff, they're putting into their personal vehicles.
It's not only that, after a fire.
Yep.
If we've, in the wintertime, if we've rolled out a lot of hose, you don't roll it up, you fold it up.
It's not bling bling.
And you have to get it back, uh, we had the fire on Gibbs Road, the first one. I hauled the hose on my tag trailer because it was froze and we had to fold it. And get it back, put it inside, saw it out, before we could put it back on.
Are we getting it a fire plate, or are we getting it a regular official use plate?
No, it's getting blue plates, fire, fire plates.
Nice.
Um, so I need a signature with your approval, I need a signature under owner lease number one by select board member.
Okay.
Motion to accept federal excess property, a Chevy Silverado fifteen. Registration and title application.
It was, yeah.
Second?
Alright.
Any discussion on favor?
Aye.
Aye? Is that the original unanimous thing? Any other new business? Can we convene? Is it raining now?
You have to give proof that it's on insurance policy before we get.
I gotta get the, I have to get the fleet.
Owner leasing one, right here?
Yeah.
Should I write, um, select board chair?
Yeah, this is also gonna be used if we've got. People that are gonna go to the fire academy. It's a four-door cab, so you can put six people in it.
Cool.
And we can send them down the lot.
Finding van fields, a hundred and down.
Okay.
Is it four by four?
No, it's not a four by four.
Anything else?
I want that, did you grab that contract, yes.
We got it all, cool, alright. Seven thirty, good deal.
We're getting better all the time.
We're getting better, I used to be here till like ten o'clock at night. And I have an idea.
Seven, it just.
An idea?